Is Reinbeck Village Place here?
Ed.
Are you here?
Or we're gonna vote against it. Either get up here, or...
We have three minutes.
You done yet?
We'll still go through January of 2014.
Fourteen, right. Right. We're extent...
Because the building hasn't changed, so the variance is exactly the same.
What do you... You just need to make a motion for a positive or negative recommendation to the zoning Board. Alright. Okay. So what you need to do?
Okay, we'll just use Nancy's letter from today, just as a guide, right? We really don't need to go into a lot...
Why don't you sit down and use the mics? Since we have an audience.
Sit down.
Since the last meeting, we submitted all of our responses to Erwin Anthony's comments. And today we receive the remaining comments, so I just would like Roddy to go quickly through those, and if you have any questions, we can address them.
Okay, thank you, members of board. Today's letter from Erwin Anthony, November 19th. I just want to thank them for reviewing our resubmission very, very quickly. We had tried to address all of their questions. It's me. And as Ed said, just to walk through here and walk through this, the majority of them had been noted as comment taken care of. A lot of them were detailed, technical detail, T-crossing, I-dawning. There were a few additions and changes. I think one notable one in here reflects the reformation of Seeker, and that's just some text about an impervious line around the storm system. So not exciting subjects, but Nancy and Erwin Anthony caught those details, so that's great to note. There had been a conversation that Nancy and I had had about the water and sewer connections. They had noted that they would like to see those designed and approved. Obviously, we have every intention of doing that. Where we stand with the building design, and based on what we did a couple of years ago, we had thought that that would be just part of your approval conditions. We actually want to meet with Anthony and Erwin Anthony and us and our team and see where we can best position our outflows for the building that we have. So that's all we're in essence, we have no issues with what we're stating.
Yeah, we'll obviously provide all of the engineering details for both water and wastewater. And one of the questions, as it was with the previous application, was that we're going to have uses at the lowest level, you know, laundry, maintenance facilities in the lowest level that would require us to discharge waste. So we would have to pump that up to the grade level, the first floor level. And the preference of, I think the Health Department and Nancy is to have a pump station at grade level, but we would then end up having two pump stations. We would have to get from the lowest level up to the upper level. Granted, that would be minimal use down there, much smaller pump, but... So that's one of the issues that we, as we had in the previous application, the previous use, there wasn't a requirement to submit that or to have that as part of the site plan approval. Our preference would be to do that. We would come back to you when we applied for a building. That's really, if it's your decision, that's what we're proposing. We'll fully comply with everything that's required.
Just a couple other notable items, I think. John, you had authored the question more than anybody else at the moment. Just in the lighting in the bollards, our guy did some research. The LED lighting in the bollards is less intense. They don't have a computer model for us to generate the photometric, but I did make a copy, which the chairman here, that shows the circles. And we'll remodel that, but that's the bollard that we'd like to use. We don't have a place locally where it is. So we just wanted to address the board's questions about the lighting. And just somewhat related to that, the sidewalk surfaces where there's existing slate, those will be removed. We're presently working to get a nice pathway out to West Market Street better than we'd conceived so far. So those are all interactive things that are in the works.
Yeah, I met with Terry Bogus, who owns the CPA firm, and we looked at the slate. We were pulling up some of that. There was a very difficult turn where our new sidewalk will end, and then you end up with this hump of asphalt that kind of goes across the front of his property. So we're gonna work with him on dressing that up so it's uniform across the front of 44, 46, and 48 West Market Street, tie all that together. I know Nancy had a concern about, you know, the type of surface, but what we're trying to do is just to create some breakpoint, so we don't have asphalt, 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 as the plans have shown. But we're open. We've shown that as stamped asphalt and stamped concrete. We also have some pervious pavers at the front entrance, but we're open for that. We would just, you know, we want to introduce some color and just different textures. But the concern is, you know, is that comfortable for someone with a stroller or a wheelchair?
Yeah.
But, you know, we're open. Yeah, we've submitted a revised EAAS to address all the technical comments in the previous quarter. And I think, you know, that was the bulk of it. There was some comments about retaining walls. That's all been addressed. You know, that's all part of the plans that we submitted last year. So I think we're at the point where, you know, we just need to look at some of these final details.
So after you go to the zoning board, you would come back then next month and you would deal with site plan approval?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's really all we wanted to accomplish tonight.
Any other questions?
I have a question on not Mr. Bogus' building, but the other one on the other side of the driveway there. Is your property on the actual edge of the building, or is it out... I mean, I think there's like a couple of feet of grass or something.
Over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's within, it's a couple of feet.
Yeah, okay.
By all this also.
Oh, okay. My concern was, you know, it's a tight fit there and just cars going in and out. A safety concern, perhaps a vehicle-striking ability, would there be any kind of, either a sidewalk barrier or...
We're gonna have a curb. There will be a raised curb.
The main thing is that it's a smooth sidewalk heading up towards the library, because the eventual goal is the village is to have sidewalk running all the way up to the library.
Right, right. And that's why, you know, I met with Terry and that we're going to work with him and extend the sidewalk, you know, uniform finishes, you know, up to the northwest corner of the building.
Excellent.
Because then you go onto the Preesi property, and then...
That's good.
Things kind of fall apart.
Right. We think we can make that look even just a little bit nicer as we get to the point. Yeah. And in terms of that building, four, this also came up in the comments originally about the number of spaces on the drawing. Right where Ed just pointed, those four spaces are attributable to...
Right here.
...the other building that he owns. So that gives dedicated parking to that, five at the moment at Terry Bogus' property as well, so that's...
The four behind 44 West are not part of... There are nine parking spots that are not your parking spots.
That's correct.
The five adjacent to Terry Bogus are not part of it as well.
Okay. Any other questions? I need a positive or a negative recommendation to the zoning board of appeals?
I'll make a positive recommendation to the zoning board of appeals to extend the approvals of existing front yard setback area variance located at 46 West Market Street.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we have findings that we're extending...
We have to vote on it first before we have findings.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Findings? It's the one, we already approved this, and we're just extending the approvals?
It is considered, it is consistent with the village master plan to include that property in development within the village of Reinbeck.
And the building up front conforms to the zoning and acts as that street frontage, so that this building doesn't destroy or eliminate street frontage because there's a building up front.
Got that count? Okay.
Okay.
We're good?
We're good. We're good. It was worth the wait. Thank you. See you next month.
Put this in the file.
All right. Put this in the file. Next item is Samuel Spears, 8 South Street, exterior renovations in the historic district. They're still here. He stuck it out.
Peter Reynolds, North River Architecture and Planning. Clint McClure, Door Construction.
Do we have a letter?
Do we have a letter from Samuel Spears in here? Okay. Okay. Let's see if we have it. Exterior restoration. Maybe we have just one of these, or do we have one set of plans, or is there more than one that we could share?
For me? John, somebody with the...
I went by the house, man.
Do you want to put the deck on? Just put the deck on the back?
Should I do a quick explanation while we're...
Sure.
Our firm was hired to help them do essentially a historical renovation, essentially a reciding of an existing house on 8th or 8th South Street in the historic district. It's Queen Anne Victorian style. You have a picture of what it looks like right now. We're here, really, it's a procedural issue that we run into. We applied for, since it was limited to a reciding project, existing essentially a maintenance project, we came to Bob Fennell at the time and asked whether we needed a building permit or what kind of approvals. Once we had submitted drawings for that restoration work to done, we were told that we could go ahead. We didn't need a permit to recide the house, as long as it was done to the existing historical detailing, which it was. And the work began. Mid-project, the client asked us whether we would also be willing to help them take an enclosed, excuse me, a back porch of the house on the, away from the street on the south side. It's a kitchen back porch within the existing footprint of the house, and essentially it's a single-glazed porch and enclose it, incorporate it into the house itself. So we came back to the town, to the village, to Bob Fennell. We filed a building permit, and we were told that we could go ahead and start, and that we did not need planning board approval to do it, since it was an existing footprint, and since it was historically in keeping and so forth. So we filed the permit. Clint could do the rest of this narrative, but essentially we filed it on October 2nd, and then were told at that time by Bob Fennell and by Gary as well that we could proceed. Gary had an injury at that time, so why don't you go ahead and fill in part of the narrative?
So at that point, October, after we filed on October 2nd, October 15th, we checked back in. Gary at the time had an injury, but told us, he was verbal word, to go ahead and proceed with that work. And then a couple weeks later, we followed back up to see where things stood with the actual physical copy of the permit, and we were told that, you know, that it would really need to come back to the planning board to get proper historical, a proper historical review before a building permit could be issued. So that's what brought us here today.
Client's not here throughout the country right now, but they, they're apprised of it, and we proceeded. Basically, they're encouraged to come and ask you whether or not we could, what we need to do to essentially close this out.
What are the building materials?
Well, we did the siding material. The siding we used is cement board, a hardy board plank. We used historical colors. We replaced all existing millwork, done some restoration of the existing millwork. We have photographs of the before and after, you know, where we are today, and you have photographs of the house as the work that was done, called phase one, essentially painting and reciding of the house.
It was aluminum siding, wasn't it?
It was originally aluminum siding. Before we, either of us got involved, the client took the aluminum off with the, you know, essentially the intention to do what we've done, which is to restore it to its original painted wood. And frankly, they insulated. There was zero insulation in the house, so it's a very tight house.
It's great from the outside.
It's a cellulos, you know, high-density.
So like the exterior trims were all fabricated to match what was historic on the house? All this new cedar siding was put up in the gable ends, and that's what you see pictured there.
And this is only visible from the backyard?
Correct.
And you would...
The new part is...
The parts that we're supplying the permit for, yes.
And all the porch material is wood?
It's got new windows, and they're historically accurate Marvin windows that, you know, not...
Real divided lights, and that's everything?
Yeah.
Divided lights, wood.
Divided lights, yeah.
I don't see any problem.
Do we need agency and neg deck? That's people definitely...
Can I make a motion for a neg deck? Oh, you want lead agency first? Make a motion for lead agency?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion for the neg deck?
I'll do that.
Second? Second someone?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion for, I'm looking at this, but it might look like it's a foot inside the side yard setback.
It's, you're not extending the, it's a pre-existing condition.
Yeah, no work on the side.
Okay. Okay, a motion for site plan approval to the exterior renovations to Samuel Spears located at 8th South Street.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for being patient.
Clark is still here.
We're here, we're here.
All right. The next item on the agenda is Reinbeck Community Center, Thompson Mazzarella Park, 68 West Market Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good night. Perfume in the village of Reinbeck? For old people?
Perfume, yeah. Oh, 10 o'clock, return to pumpkins.
10 o'clock perfume, anybody over 50?
My pumpkin is waiting outside.
We've got your little...
Thank you. These zoots, man.
Can we go over all the details, please?
Yes, make sure we read every page.
Is the public hearing closed on this?
Yes. And I do not know what the town is doing, but...
We met with the town last night, and the town planning board asked that Oxford prepare a draft resolution that the board could look at at the next planning board meeting. They had hoped that they would have an opportunity to meet with you, to get a sense of where you're at, and also to be sure that the road connects as it leaves the village and enters the town. So... And they recognize that there is certainly a lot more activity in Phase One in the village than in the town. They're considering waiving the wetlands process, because they feel a lot of that has already been covered.
If you go to C, Rich Messer, Weston Sampson, but C4 gives you the Phase One overview and provides a list of these Phase One items, and it's shown relative to being in the village or the town on the right-hand side.
Yeah, I can read that.
Well, the full set was requested to do the 11x17s for this, but... So just a review, I guess, quickly on the...
Rich, may I ask, is this any different than the sheet that was submitted with the...
So we've already reviewed?
Yes. Okay. Consistent, same, same list. It's now put on this plan before it was an individual sheet that we handed out. And the area for this Phase One is clouded, which is the 650 feet of the main entrance, the changes to the library entrance, and some parking changes. The electrical from the existing transformer that goes down to the pavilion, which is gonna have a second transformer, and as well as the full eight-inch water line's gonna go the 650 feet, and then transferred to a temporary line, a two-inch line that goes the remaining distance to the pavilion, and then associated septic system with the pavilion. All that's clouded on that sheet and listed on the right-hand side of that sheet. I think the one area is that there were some questions, I guess it makes sense to just go back and look at. C5 gives you the drainage details. We have a final report that is gonna be generated for the stone wall pollution prevention plan.
The library was concerned about that.
Right. So the details, you can see, there's a couple catch basins at the entrance to the library. That's again on C5. And all the calculations and final package will be put together, but it's all been shown and designed, is shown on this sheet, C5. There's a detention and infiltration system that's down in the actual town portion, as you see in the left-hand corner of that sheet. I'll go through each sheet, I mean, the main components of the sheets that I think we're kind of still open for questioning.
All right. The parking at the library, I see you've added three spots on the side here?
Yes, if you want to go a little bit more specific on the library plan, you want to look at C15. That gives you...
That was probably the thing that drew the most comments in terms of, this part of the plan was to provide enough parking for library functions, and then also to provide a reasonable access for spillover parking down into the, further into the rec area.
Yeah, the additional parking was, there was three parking spaces that were taken away for the new entrance road, and there's shown to be six additional parking spaces added back in. So, you know, this plan, C15, shows those six parking spaces that were added. And the three that are lost aren't shown, but obviously that was the point where the new entrance road is and where the drainage is shown.
Now, does any, we have any issues with the parking? John?
I have issues with the front yard parking.
What is the front, I mean, what is the front of the library? That's, I guess, is it Traver Lane, or is it 308?
It's the, the front is the front that faces the main road.
Well...
And, you know, this is where the pedestrians are gonna come in, the sidewalk here, and it's odd that the sidewalk sort of stops.
Doesn't go across the...
I don't know if you're incorporating a crosswalk here.
There's a crosswalk there now. The existing crosswalk.
Yeah, it should show that, and it should show the sidewalk actually connecting to the crosswalk.
And there's a sidewalk on the...
It goes around the...
There's a crosswalk that goes across here, and then there's a sidewalk that goes around to the front of the hospital here.
Exactly. So just this drawing should show that.
Don't make the hospital.
Goes across to the library.
The answer is there with her name, right?
The answer is on the survey.
The answer sits there.
Yes, yes.
It wasn't picked up on the survey, but we can draw it in there. There's an existing bird crosswalk.
Okay, so...
There's a bird crosswalk.
So here's my comment, which is that you're gonna extend the, or fill in the stone wall?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. Any landscaping that you could incorporate into the plan that would...
Screen the cars.
...screen those free parking spaces?
There's three trees proposed, which is...
Well, I'm looking more towards shrubs or something that would be lower to the ground that would...
Like here on C12.
Oh, yeah.
So, if I may, you had a meeting with Meg about the trees, and she had commented about the type of trees that was to be in there.
Right, she, yes, she was very specific about it.
I'm less focused on the trees, per se, and something that is more ground to...
You're looking for a buffer.
...for a buffer in terms of, that will make the cars less visible if parking is allowed there.
The point is, we shouldn't have parking there and then have to screen the library to block the view of the cars. There's room in the, in the back portion of this property for additional parking.
You added how many spaces?
Three.
Three in the back here.
So that makes up for the three that are lost, right?
You could put perpendicular parking there instead of parallel parking. There's room to do it, and it's flat enough. You could put 6, 8, 10 cars there if you wanted to.
There is a couple of trees back there that just kind of come into play a little bit.
A little bit, but you can park between them and cut, just the way you cut a curve around a tree. So the point being is you can supply all the parking you need back towards the real driveway, rather than the front yard.
I agree with John. It's just that we were being pushed, and it was a matter of not knowing. I totally agree with John on this.
Right, those three spaces are pretty much useless because the entrance is on the side.
Well, no, they're, they're at the same grade as the...
As the spot.
They're not useless, they're actually, probably as convenient as any of the other spaces.
But they're not attractive.
People are gonna use them. It's just that I don't think they belong there. I think we made up for the three that we removed, and I feel that's all we're responsible for. And I wouldn't eat into that front lawn. I see that as the front of the library.
Yeah, and that's where the pedestrian enters. You don't want them to walk through a parking lot, essentially.
But we were in an awkward place. We were being pushed.
But I think the compromise is to provide the parking that the library asks for, but do it in a location that doesn't infringe on the front yard.
Yeah.
We just went through this huge public hearing about front yards and parking, and here we're going right back and sticking three new spaces directly in front of the building.
Yeah. But all of you have to tell us what to do, please.
Right. I won't vote for it unless we support these spaces are removed. I think that's a really bad proposal.
Mary and I both spend a lot of time at the library, and the library is a very, very heavily-used resource in the village, and any given day, it is packed. It's packed with mothers with young children going to the credible programs they have during the day, and senior citizens using the computers and using the library, and there needs to be parking. And I was hoping that we could squeeze something out of this.
I know, but that's the responsibility of the library. We're taking something away.
And you're giving it back.
We're improving the circulation pattern, and we're giving back that space.
You're changing the circulation pattern.
Is Stephen Cook giving any input on this?
Well, he did at the public hearing.
About where he wants the parking.
Right, right. Well, they were looking for more parking.
Yeah, they'd like us, they'd like us more. It's possible, and I understand that.
But this is, this is also the opportunity to add some more parking if there's gonna be an opportunity to do it.
Maybe John's right. If you could get a couple of spots on this side, if you went, instead of this way, you went the other way, and I don't know, whatever you could do would be good.
I think there's no reason...
More perpendicular parking, it's just gonna be more paving and deeper.
Just a little bit more asphalt. If you could do four or five spots or something, that would just help, anything to help, we get something out of this.
Yeah, we can, we can change, if you want to eliminate that, we'll see how many we can squeeze in.
That would be helpful.
As Aaron indicated, there's a few trees that...
Even if, even if that is reserved for volunteer and employee parking or whatever...
We'll do our best based on whatever existing vegetation is there, so we don't hurt any of the existing trees.
Whatever you could do would be really appreciated by the library, we know that. We have, we have another issue. The village board really would like sidewalks installed in front of any project. They'd like, the hospital is putting sidewalks all the way along Route Line and all the way down Montgomery Street. The village board has requested that there be a sidewalk from the new entrance to Dr. Preisi's property line.
Is the village willing to pay for it?
I'm saying the village board requested that.
Makes absolute sense. I mean, that's in the long-range plan. It's just a matter of...
It would be wonderful. I don't know if they, we're struggling to see how much we could get into Phase One. And we know that with continued fundraising, we'll be able to do a lot of the other amenities that are important. There's no question there should be a sidewalk going from the center... There's no question there should be a sidewalk going from the center of the village to the library.
Because we just asked Rhinebeck Village Place to get it up to Dr. Parisi. You can come down to Dr. Parisi and the village only has to deal with the front of Dr. Parisi's. Has to finally complete a safe sidewalk for kids who'll go up there all the time and not be walking on the road as people come tearing down that hill.
Right, the difference here is that we're not developers, we're the community paying for this.
I know that, I understand that.
It's everybody's money. So, again, that, you know, it'll be in the plan, but we're not sure if it could happen in Phase One.
So, so maybe it could be put in Phase Two?
Sure, absolutely.
And be part of, be part of Phase Two so that it would be at least something that we would have.
Did you get the go-ahead for the narrower entrance road? I see that's in the plan.
Yeah, we haven't had any, we haven't had any response in the negative on that, so...
Okay.
That's been the plan.
Uh, you mean, our discussion with DOT?
No, no, this is regarding...
With the fire.
Oh.
Yeah, the discussion.
Emergency, emergency access down to the...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, everything, you were talking with someone.
Have we heard otherwise on it?
We haven't heard otherwise. I don't know if Bob Ellsworth was going to make that contact.
Okay.
So, so that needs, that needs to be. Now, we did also get a letter not too long ago from the neighbor in terms of the light. The, I didn't bring the, the letter with me.
Didn't I? They were concerned about the lights at the, at the ball fields, are the lights...
Well, I think the lights in, in general, we had that concern when the library, John will remember this in terms of... Yeah, if you would, that would be helpful in terms of doing whatever we can to, to shield whatever new lighting that goes in along here so that it doesn't...
All this is, all this is downlit, whereas the problem we have with the library lighting, it was they were acorn lights.
It's very different than the library lighting.
So I don't see how any of these, unless the lighting of the ball fields, that would be a problem perhaps in Phase Two or something.
Yeah, and we'll have that discussion and the type of lighting we're looking at is similar to Bard where the lighting does not leave the side of the field.
So we have...
Yeah, E2 is the sheet that has the lighting dispersion. And, I think, put some other details on it, 22 of the 34.
Might stop at D10 and then go to AT1.
Okay, I'm writing my notes, I wanted to be sure, was there a decision that we're removing the parking on 308?
I guess so.
Is that...
I think absolutely.
Yes, yes, okay, great.
As long as you can provide for...
At least the three spots, maybe four or five, whatever you can do.
Additional spots in terms of...
We'll definitely do three and if the vegetation allows, we'll put in a couple of extra.
That'd be great, that'd be really appreciated, and...
You have the opportunities where the boulders are, you can put parking there. Just move the boulders back and you already have paved spots instead of...
Well, that's supposed to be kind of a walkway, I think.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, it's what, 20-some feet wide?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know the exact width, but...
Kids will walk through the cars.
Yeah, you could put two spaces in there instead of...
If we make it perpendicular or slightly spewed parking that goes in deeper, then we can add probably one or two more from the three.
That'd be great.
So, so that's what we're going to do, I think.
Is the, just a point of clarification, is the parking going to be on the same side that we show it?
Yes.
On our drawing here, we're just seeing the backside inside.
I think that's where it's flattest.
We're going to just slide it in there.
Okay.
As close to that rear entrance road as you can get it. So it's closer to the door. And I wanted to just also have the board go on record that we would like to see the narrower entrance road. And there are your discussions with the...
Okay.
It's on the plan, it's just, she, D6 is, is the plan where it shows the cross-section of the road, typical cross-section. With the light hole, the four-foot grass strip and the sidewalk.
Really?
It's 30 of 34.
So that's in response to the planning, village planning, like it says.
Right, and it saves money.
And it's a lot nicer.
Yeah, and it protects the pedestrians.
Right, people will move slower.
This looks like we have the grass strip, the sidewalk, the lights.
Right.
Right. But I, I'm not sure, you know, where we go from here because we're, you know, very close on this and, but you, we would normally make a motion, probably next time or something like that, we'll see the final plan for site plan approval. But you want to do something coordinated with the town, some kind of resolution that they would like to both pass or...
Oh, I don't, I think each of you need your own resolution.
Okay.
And then you would start Phase One, Phase Two.
Yeah, I, I think maybe if you just talk to Mike to see what he feels may be necessary. If they feel they've covered everything, you, you're thinking that you've covered...
As long as the engineering is contiguous in terms of, then...
Roads have to meet.
Right, right, but that's, but that's, you know, we're using the same engineer for the village part and the town part, so we really shouldn't have...
Any questions.
Any questions in terms of things meeting up at the, at the boundaries between the town and the village.
I hope you're saying with a smile.
That's correct.
Right, right.
I'll talk to Michael about some, because normally we would, you know, look at this thing next month or something and say, well, you know, we've had the site plan, a recommendation for a site plan approval of this. And, but if Michael wants something more formal like that...
And then after that, what happens after that? Is there any other step after that? Is that the end with the village planning board?
Yeah.
Okay.
We hope.
Park.
Great.
Is this a one-way road around the library?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one way out there.
And, you know, I don't know what's happening with the bathrooms, with the septic systems down there, soccer fields or whatever for the future. But as far as part in the park, I think you've answered all of our questions about lighting, the grass strip, the road. And I don't see anything that would, you've been very cooperative. And I guess the only question is the sidewalk to look at that, you know, down at Dr. Parisi on the plan somewhere.
We'll add that as Phase Two.
And when the community centerpiece comes about, which is what, Phase Three or Four or Five or...
Yeah, it's only mentioned on the front and that's it, after that, there's no...
Then at that point, you'll address parking and all those issues in terms of relative to that.
And everything, all of that is planned on that particular site, all the parking for the community center.
C2 shows just the initial plan for that and then after that it's...
Like just, you know, final sketch of the, of the parking around the library and I don't see any reason why we couldn't make a motion next month for a site plan approval. And I'll ask Michael if he wants some formal thing, but normally we would just say...
Maybe they have to be contingent upon the approval of the other, each contingent upon the approval of the other.
I have no idea, it's all in the intermunicipal agreement, but I'll check with Michael. And otherwise we could just say, you know, a motion for site plan approval, if this plan, we approve it.
Great.
If they want some long thing written up by Art to make it more official, then that's fine with me.
That'll be wonderful because then that allows us to begin the RFP knowing that the plan represents what both planning boards have agreed to.
I don't think we need to have a joint meeting where we vote on our half and they vote on their half.
Okay.
As long as there's no, no conflict, I think we can do it separately.
I think we could do it next time.
Unless the attorneys tell us something different.
All right, all right, great, thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you for your patience.
I can't believe it took up all this time.
Oh, my gosh.
All right, the last item on the agenda.
Money being spent on consultants.
What do you mean, the last item, the last item on the agenda? What are we going to do, what?
James Ollyo Crystal Lake Lodge Site Plan Review.
So we take, John, this is a short meeting, Chris?
Good morning.
Good morning, yes.
Is it the 20th yet?
Oh, gosh.
Oh, you grew by one.
We didn't have a chair for him last time.
Oh, okay.
Now, we have comments in the village, you're still, still with us? Comments in the village engineer on the site plan.
Right, I believe that's what we have and then we also have, just, we compiled a list of some of the open items from last time that weren't necessarily on the engineer's report. So we're happy to run through those and just show you how we've made those changes that you had asked for.
Some issues here that are requiring some more action. The village engineer suggested, you know, combining of the lots and...
Yeah, I think it would be productive to go through these because I think there's some...
We have to follow, we have to do that process too, so we have an extra step coming in here. So let's just, I guess we'd have a discussion, see where we are.
That would be great.
To come back. I'm praying everyone is going to clear an item off the agenda so we can move on and everybody keeps coming back.
We cleared an item.
We did?
Yeah, 8 South Street.
8 South Street, yes, we approved the porch.
So you want to go through the engineer's letter first or should we go through, you know, the list of the open items from last time?
We'll go through the engineer's letter first.
All right.
They received a variance from the zoning board of appeals, so that's okay.
Number two on the existing parcels, do you, we want to combine them? Does the village planning board have a process they want us to go through? Or can we make it a condition that before the plan is, or before the map is signed and everything official, we go to the assessor's office and we combine?
Is that a lot line adjustment that we have to do?
Lot line adjustment that has to go, right.
Before this court?
Do we do a tax map merger? Can we just merge the two tax parcels?
Same ownership.
Yeah, I think you do, actually I did that back on my property, yeah.
Right, same owner and, and we've processed this as, you know, the same application all throughout the variance.
We'll, we'll get that reviewed with, with Rich Olson, just to make sure we're not committing any faux pas.
File a map on record.
I'm sorry?
Is there a file map on record?
Of the two different units.
I don't think it's any part, it's not part of a formal subdivision.
No, just two tax parcels.
Two tax parcels. What I would envision is that we could have a conditional approval. And then before the chairman is allowed to sign the map, we have to combine the parcels, that's what I would think. Then once we have verification, the parcels are combined, then the map can be signed and have the final site plan.
And on the plan, would you indicate that the parcels are being combined?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we could do that.
All the bulk regulations would apply to the greater parcel.
I think that would be good.
Okay, thank you.
Number three is the carport, existing boat house is an asphalt area with a wooden fence.
Yeah, there's an important, um, clarification to make on that and that is that we intend to keep the carport. We're essentially altering the carport and not replacing it with a new building. That's, that's always been our, our intention is to, you know, build on that footprint.
Talking about the footprint, yeah.
Is it okay, can I talk?
Sure, yes, please.
All right, are you proposing a dwelling unit in the footprint of the carport?
Yes.
The carport, it's a, it's a real, in my opinion, it's a real loose use of the word carport and I brought photos of it. I don't know if you've been there, but it's an asphalt area that has a wooden fence along the side and, and some rafters with missing roof. So it, it, to me, it doesn't appear to be a building. And, and the, the site plan shows that it's, that it's currently not within the limits of this parcel. And since they're changing the building so greatly, I think it's reasonable to expect that you're going to look at the property line and the side yard.
So it doesn't, it's right on the property line, maybe over the property?
It's over the property line according to their site plan.
So is your intention to move it back five feet from, or what's the side, is that back 10 feet?
10 feet.
No, the intention was to build within that footprint to alter the existing building, which is more than just a carport. There's a, there's a boat house there, it's actually a three-story building with a carport section to it. We were going to alter the building, keeping the footprint. And then as far as the lot, the encroachment onto the neighboring property, there's also an encroachment of theirs onto ours. And we're going to accomplish that through basically just a property line agreement.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that would qualify as part of the, per se.
Certainly, I don't think you need, I mean, that doesn't give...
Like a lean-to.
Right.
You know, it's, it's one thing to say it's an existing building and you're making changes to it and therefore you don't have to come back for side yard setback. But you're taking down something that isn't really a building, permanent structure and making it...
Making it permanent structure.
Making a permanent structure without side yard setback or even over the line. So it seems to me you should, should probably try to adhere to the side yard setback and if you cannot in that area, then you should come in for an area variance.
Would that apply just to the area of the carport? Because the building is very much a building.
Yeah.
Whatever part of the actual, the, the building that has foundation, I would think would be...
So you're using foundation as the definition of, of building?
I don't know, what?
I'm just searching for some values.
I guess...
Yeah, it's, I don't know, some codes have, building defines sometimes just structure. Sometimes structure is just, it's, that's the definition.
The last time, the last time I was here, I think the planning board was talking about, wasn't there an applicant who had a house with a deck? And they were enclosing a deck to make a screened-in roof? And, and, and that existing edge of the house did not abide by the side yard, but because they were changing that area...
Because they were building up on the deck, right.
They had to go to the ZDA.
Yes, that is absolutely correct. They did not have to go for the, the portion of the house that was not being changed, but for the part that was being...
But, but in this example, it's, it's, it's not just the side yard, it's that they have, they've shown on their mapping that, that that area of the building, what looks like a wooden fence, that that's over the property line apparently. I think now's the time to perhaps fix that.
Is the building itself over the property line or just the carport?
The corner of the carport. It's the corner of the carport right there and then you see the neighbor's deck is their line, so that's where Darren was looking at.
Basically, just a lot line agreement.
They would agree with the property, it's your encroachment and we're encroachment here.
Right, though...
Yeah, the house on the other parcel is more over onto your land, I saw it.
Yeah.
Though the issue is still that the setback.
Yeah, it seems to me if, if we want to bring things into conformance as much as possible, you know, I think you can make the case that you have a building. Although building is defined pretty loosely in our law.
It is.
I mean, if we, if it weren't there and we came to build it, it would require a permit, it would require, it would be considered a structure if you reverse the scenario, is that incorrect? The carport? So I'm just, I'm, in fairness, I'm, I'm questioning reversing it because if it weren't there and we were coming to build it, you'd qualify it as a structure, the building inspector wouldn't, it would require all that information. So to not refer to it as part of building footprint is ambiguous to me.
Right, though, though you're intensifying the use of that space.
Agreed, agreed.
Which, which is within the setback and in the process of intensifying the use within the setback.
But we're also de-intensifying the use of the parcel overall from a group home that has 23 full-time residents.
Right, but that's, that's, that's a separate issue, I think, in terms of, it seems to me that we would, we would... Require, you know, and I don't, I don't know that you'll have any problem getting the variance, but I think that, that the application for a variance would be necessary and I think we would have...
What was the definition of building again, you, I'm sorry?
Well, there is, there is a definition, definition of structure.
There's also the definition of building.
All right, I didn't get to that yet.
Building is any roof structure intended for shelter, housing or enclosure, closure of personal animals or chattels.
That'd be slaves.
Personal effects.
You know, when this was, I mean, the roof, actually, the fact that it's just rafters is a fairly recent phenomenon. The roof we just deemed recently structurally, you know, unsafe. Yeah, so I mean, that was a roof structure when this process began, we just took it down for the sake of safety. That entire thing was under, an under-roof carport filled with chattel. Well, I mean, chattel is the storage of stuff, I mean, that's what it, what it is and there was a storage of stuff and, you know...
That's a building, man.
And that's a building, you know...
You have a roof that prevents precipitation from getting to the ground, so it's...
And it can fall on someone and hurt them.
And so we were...
It's a building.
You know, so I, I think it's pretty clear, you know, and it...
Is the boat house itself going to be torn down and replaced or is it just going to be renovated?
I think strictly speaking by the, by the code, by the definitions in the building code... I think strictly speaking by, by the code, by the definitions in the building code, it would be altered.
Altered. So the building is going to be modified, saved, not completely demolished and rebuilt in the same footprint?
No, I mean, it's gonna have to be brought up to code.
Extend the building out into the.
Into what's currently the carport.
Yeah, to utilize that footprint.
To extend the building out, to add to the existing building.
Within the existing, within the existing footprint.
It's not really our call.
Let the experts.
Yeah.
I put a, I pressed the pause button, David. I pressed the pause button.
But to, to be clear, if you, if you didn't, if it wasn't clear before, the, the part that is, are the rafters was under a roof.
Yeah, yeah, I heard you say that.
Very, when this process began, so just to be clear, it was.
Absolutely.
I guess I, I reacted more to the wall that looks like it's been fenced to me.
My beard wasn't gray before this process began.
Well, you know, the other thing to just mention is that there was a previously approved, you know, hotel building on the same site. So when I bought the place from Volpe, there was a plan that was an approved plan.
And included this.
That include this being a hotel, hotel units in this exact footprint. So we have precedent that it was an approved thing, and we actually bought with specifically that plan in front of us when we bought the property that was approved. Well, by this order of predecessor board. So we actually have blueprints from them and, you know, of, of that stuff. So, I mean, there was also precedent of it being approval, I mean, so we, you know.
Where'd Dave go?
The restroom.
I'd like to take a look at it and cast an opinion, but I need some time.
Alright, we'll put that one aside for the time being.
So number four.
Number four. So the bulk regulations table, again, that would be modified to reference the combined lot as opposed to what it is currently is, talking about two separate lots. Okay, that's an easy one.
And then the owner will be the same?
The owner is the same. The parcel access isn't updated yet. The owner for both parcels is Del Olio Properties, too. So none of the parcel access information is correct for either parcel. That's a little slow to update, as, as we all know. And then the concrete wall, I think, is a question for the board more than it is for us.
Right. It's possibly the village of Rhinebeck property, and partially on Crystal Lake, finds what the parcel boundary acceptable to the village, well, that's.
That's up to the village board.
That's not us.
Right, are you proposing any change to the concrete wall?
No.
Doesn't seem like that to me. It's a site plan issue, but you can talk to the village board if you so choose.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like something we could work out if they ever needed to do something to it, or we ever needed to do something to it down the road, but our plan doesn't contemplate changing it at all.
Chances are the village wouldn't say anything about it, however, it was, it's a point that's partly on their property and partly not on the property, and you're looking at the project, so it's the time to look at.
This is a time to make that determination if there are issues with it.
Are, are there any issues? Is the wall deteriorating? Is it?
It's not the prettiest wall in the world, but it's a wall.
Does the village have issues with that wall? Would be the other issue.
Anybody, anybody?
Oh, village.
Yeah, but we haven't drawn you the village board here.
No, it's concrete.
The cement wall.
Cement wall.
I mean, there's a stone wall that goes on the north side of the driveway, that part of it got robed when the.
In the river canyon.
Towards the back, towards the lake.
The white wall.
Could show you on the plan, actually.
Prox to, to the park.
I mean, eventually we would want to make it pretty and, and resolve the issue, but that's just not, you know, it's not a mission critical, you know, kind of thing at all.
Is there a question to take it down?
We're not proposing.
Not on the table.
Alright, so the next issue, I guess, is also a village. Questioning the, the dam, the flood zone. I guess Irene just came down and took away that road. I don't think it flooded the property.
No, it did not.
The, the road acted as a diversion for that, but I guess you're concerned about that it technically isn't an inundation area?
I wouldn't say that I'm concerned. I'm just pointing out a point of fact, because I think we only should be aware of. It, it looks as though you folks have, have looked at the hundred-year flood plane, and you showed, saw that the detailed study said 184, and it looks like you, you appropriately traced the flood zone onto your map. The, the emergency action plan that I referred to, the clerk has it, but I brought it with me, and we wanted to look at it. The purpose for an emergency action plan is it's a very, this is a class B dam, so a class B dam is less hazard than a class C, or, or, I think, a class A. Anyway, the method for this, you basically take a hundred-year storm, and you have to go by 150%, and you have to assume that the dam breaks. And then you have to see where the water goes. The water covers most of your parcel, so it's just the be aware. You're in the, you're in the hazard area now. Your new structures will be in the hazard area. This park had a lot of impact in recent storms, and you, you might want to just look at it.
Yeah, well, fortunately, we were around the property during that storm and saw that the house, which would be the closest to where, you know, there were the issues at the park, was not affected by it.
Right, and I saw that your, your garage is under the units, the boat house, I can't tell what your elevations are for that building, because I didn't see it on the plan. But the other ones, it said garage 100 was 184, and then one of them was 186, so it's good that you're not lower.
Right.
But, you know, what if the detailed study is off by a foot or two?
Right.
You're, you're right on the, the flood elevation from the FEMA detailed study, which is approximate.
But the, you know, the multiplied by 150, you know, basically assumes that the dam fails in, you know, within one second, the whole dam goes away, right?
Is the FEMA flood.
The FEMA flood, right, so.
184, and, and your basements are at 184, so.
If you had the experience of the hundred-year flood, hopefully it doesn't happen again for another hundred years, but it's good to be aware of it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, actually, we've had a couple of hundred-year floods in the last few years.
Irene, I think that was the most damaging one. And I think the village has made some changes to the, the drainage system for the dam, and.
The wooden valve in the bottom.
They can open up.
The old valve. Theoretically, ringway.
It's just so hard to comment for, for the applicant to think about and report back if there's anything you're changing.
Just out of curiosity, how much of that area of Route 9 is in that inundation zone? Is it, is it significant?
When we looked at it, it's just significant is qualitative.
The majority of the room?
See, I don't, I don't, I was looking specifically at your parcel. I wasn't thinking about your question. No, it's not. This is Crystal Lake, this is your property, and so just a little bit of Route 9.
A little bit of Route 9 and then all down here Rockefeller Lane, okay. Or one, it's maybe 10 or 12 that are in it.
Yeah, yeah, the front is along Route 9 across from the Astro Home, because the, the, as you know, the Landsman kill, it crosses south of where you are, and then it goes through the Astro Home property. And, you know, once you get further down here, I think that the inundation area more closely matches the hundred-year zone. Because this is a really large, a large watershed area with a very small impoundment. So here, you know, if, if you have a dam break, it, it gets much bigger than, than the flood zone. That's why you're on the edge of the flood zone, but in the hazard area, you're covered.
Gotcha.
So.
So it's us in most of our.
The two-story frame house is in the hundred-year flood, but the new buildings are not? Is that how I?
No.
In the inundation zone from the dam.
None of their proposed structures or existing structures are within the flood area. They're in the hazard area for the dam.
Okay.
150 multiple times multiple of the hundred-year flood.
Frame house is much lower than the new buildings.
Right.
That would be really inundated.
So double and then another half of that of the hundred-year flood.
The kill generates an amazing amount of water. When Sandy was coming, and we didn't get a drop of rain from Sandy, we, they drained the lake. And I said, oh goodness, the, the kill is like almost dried up, nothing's running, we didn't get any rain, it's gonna be like that for months. In 24 hours, the lake filled. A trickle apparently coming down. So the kill generates an amazing amount of water, and just to be aware of that.
Yeah, that's a big watershed.
Thank you for the lesson in water.
That was amazing, I, you know, the lake was bone dry, and it was filled in 24 hours with no rain.
I lost my car keys at the bottom, that would have been a good time.
To go looking for coins, so.
Yeah, we dredged it not too long ago, so there wouldn't be old coins.
Historical coins.
So which point are we on here?
Eight.
So we're on eight, so.
Texas County parcel access.
Both are actually served by septic systems. I don't think parcel access is correct in that. In fact, we did some test bits today and confirmed that, you know, there are existing septic systems, and there's no sanitary sewer for the project for either structure, and both are served by municipal water.
What are you proposing for the new structures? Are you gonna?
Septic. No.
The existing house, we're gonna reuse the existing septic that it's on, and then for the mill buildings and the boat house, we're proposing a new septic.
Okay, and so are you in front of the health department?
Yeah, we haven't made a submission yet, but we did test holes with them today.
Alright, because the system for the farmhouse, you're expanding the farmhouse considerably?
Well, we're not adding bedrooms to it. I talked about that with Dave McDougall today.
Oh, okay.
And what we agreed, what we agreed on that one is, we're gonna reuse the existing septic, because the bedroom count isn't gonna change.
Oh, okay.
But we're gonna provide him with an expansion design, so he has something on record for that building in case of failure.
He had a satisfaction.
So what is the addition about?
We have the renders and everything.
The, it's, it's a function of the extent of the lower story, but the lower story will be more than 50% underground. So the code says it would have to be a three-story structure to require it in residential.
So you don't plan to put no in?
Uh, we haven't gotten that far, you know, in terms of looking at the cost implications of doing it. It could be, I mean, it's coming down the road as a code requirement anyway, so, but we, I can't tell you definitively.
The reason I'm bringing it up is because of the amount of water that you have to provide, and this area that you're talking about, that's not had a quality, 15-inch water supply.
We'd have to have our own tank if we did a sprinkler system.
A tank. Also, the, well, the line is undersized for fire sprinklers in front of this building, but there is an eight-inch line to, two doors up that we could extend to get the flow.
Other side of the road, right.
We were told it was on our side of the road, because Astor went across Route 9 to tap into it.
There's a six-inch line that goes up to South Street and stops in the South Street, South, to, to your place, there's a four-inch line which is quite particular. So what side of the street did Astor bring their line? On the west side. On the west side. But there's a hydrant on the east side, too, so we have to see what side's line feeds that hydrant. That's a four-inch line.
To both hydrants? Because there's one north of us and one south of us. I know the one south is on a four-inch line.
I know, I know we have a four-inch line in front of our car.
No, I know that, but I thought the hydrant north of us was on an eight-inch line.
Yeah, I don't know what that one's on. And we'd have to see what the, the, the fire flow inside would activate, and then see what the actual.
But I think the intention is.
But the answer is we're contemplating sprinklers, so.
Sprinkles, yeah, it doesn't seem a two-story building needs one.
Right.
It's gotta be three stories.
Yeah, so, so the whole point is.
Right, and if we did decide to do sprinklers at a later date, we would obviously need storage or more capacity, but it's not the plan.
Right.
And then I have nine is Nancy wants to see all those on the plan.
Yep.
Piping connections, cleanouts, manholes, something must have all been on the plan.
Doing the test bits today was helpful, because there were some that nobody knew where they were, so we found them.
And you had some comments of the, the previous?
Yeah, we just thought we would, you know, close up all the loose ends by just running through some of the things that were brought out previously, brought up previously, so Barry, if you want to jump in.
Do you mind if we open up one of the larger drawings, just to show you the changes there were?
That's because they are the color.
Yeah, the color one is.
Is that the old one or the new?
I don't know, I'm sorry.
Alright, yes.
This is 10-113, this is, oh, you have one? These are the new ones.
10-20-13, you should use the new version.
10-20-13. I think they're all, I think they're all elevation issues.
So there's a sheet called farmhouse elevations in here, it's like the third sheet.
Four zero. I think one piece items, maybe a couple of those here.
The first one was elevation of farmhouse addition.
Right, okay, so that's, that's, you see that?
Farmhouse addition plan.
Farmhouse addition.
There's a small kind of breezeway connection, and a simple gable structure, as much as the entire of the main house.
So what is it gonna be if there's not bedrooms in here?
It's, it's a storage building.
So what?
Storage building.
A storage, two-story storage?
Yeah, you know, with, with six units and a pool, and there's just things to be put away in the wintertime and that kind of thing.
And I think the intention is it's really an approval placeholder for a building that, you know, we're just anticipating it might, might be needed at some point.
Right, it's not something we intended to do, we just asked us to show it, so.
We should show it more specifically rather than just approve a quick one.
But it just, you know, with, we don't have a lot of storage space in this building, and you just don't know what you're gonna ultimately need, is just chattel.
There's a lot of chattel that's.
Word of the night, yes.
How do you know that word?
So you're not intending to build this, but you want to get approval for it?
Yeah, just, that was your recommendation, that if you think we might ever do it, do it, show it now.
It's a little odd the way it's set off with a little linkage building and a different roof line. Normally, when you put an addition on a house, you actually attach it to the house.
Yeah, it would undermine, to some extent, it would undermine the house relative to their bedrooms in there. It's a structure that, that wouldn't be contiguous with the outside space.
Windows here to maintain light.
And not really mess with the massing of that original house. I mean, it's, it's, you can see here, it's set back from the facade, so the sign really still stands proud, and it's really more of a secondary structure.
And this would cover up that window, presumably a window on the second floor as well?
If it was attached.
If it was attached.
If it were attached, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think a lot can be done with things like color and texture that will make it look appropriate. I think if it's both done in sort of white clappard, I don't think it would. It would read, it would read as weird. I think if it's red to offset each other, I think it would probably.
I'd always been told historic additions to more historic buildings should look like they were additions, not like you were trying to recreate the building.
There's dispute in the field, but some people think that is some, the federal government agrees with that.
I think we'd bring that when, if and when, you know, we decide to build it done.
The other thing to think about is that what you have out there right now is that long covered walkway, which is this extra-long continuous linkage.
But, but that's disappearing.
Yeah, that's disappearing, so that's.
So that's.
But this is what's gonna be seen from the road more than anything.
What I'm saying is better than what's there now.
Yeah. What's the siding on here now?
It's aluminum over some hopefully nice clapper.
It's gonna be wood.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was.
Yeah, it's gonna be, look, it's gonna be historically restored.
Okay, and whatever it was go, it would be built with the same sort of materials and.
Would they have to come back for site plan?
Not if it's approved now, unless, you know, it lapses for, I guess.
But you could, you would take that as a condition.
We might want to make that conditional in terms of, I guess, I would, I would want to make it conditional only because what we agree with these gentlemen, if they were to divest themselves of this property and somebody else were to come in, then we would not have the history in terms of what was agreed upon or what was discussed.
Yeah, I mean, a condition to use the same materials and character and.
Absolutely.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Should we talk about garage doors?
Yeah, rail shutters?
Mentioned in the building.
Mentioned, yeah.
Only on the street, on the roadside.
No, but I mean, the one they have now might be aluminum shutters.
Yeah, no, they're, they're.
If we're lucky, they're probably plastic.
So you're gonna put rail shutters.
Rail shutters, yeah, they make nice recreations.
So that should be specified on the plan, that you're gonna use clappard.
We should have all the details as if you're building it.
Yeah, or at least the materials certainly.
Materials.
I, I would think, I would think. Well, I, I would think, I would think as much detail as possible.
But do the materials need to be specified if it's gonna be just part of the same materials of the building? I mean, in other words.
Well, that should, that should be specified in terms of that, the materials will match.
As long as we have the flexibility to use something like a hardy plank or something like that, you know, there are better products than, you know, wood cover today. Yeah, so as long as we're held to a standard that would be appropriate, like on South Street or something like that, I think we're fine. The intention's not to put vinyl or aluminum on this building or, you know, Home Depot shutters or anything like that.
Right, again, the problem that I have is, is that.
No, I'm talking to the condition, right. So the condition of whatever your wording is on.
We need to establish what that condition is so that.
Your eight South Street wording from earlier tonight, whatever that was, is, we're happy with that. The next item that we had been keeping track of was garage doors in place of the carports. There was an objection to the use of the carports, so this latest submission.
Carriage house door, see it on the low?
There it is.
And a reminder, they're recessed, as we mentioned last time, and they're set back, so there's columns in front, there's gonna be a, a shadow cast on them, so they're not on the face of the building like in, there would be in, you know, in a modern structure.
So these are in front?
No, 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 no.
This plane is set back from here.
They're behind the, the plane of the building.
Right, that's what I mean, oh, yeah, they're back.
The upstairs in front, that's right.
So you effectively have a three-foot front porch.
Half, half, half is half full, yes.
Like the yellow building on Carson.
They sit in shadow.
Yes.
They sit in a deep shadow. That's the goal.
Okay, nice.
And then in the same place, the, the, the barn sashes, there was an objection to the long barn-style sashes that we had.
We made them mold, you know, pairs, to keep them, so they're, they kinda pick up on the proportion of the sashes of the double homes.
I actually liked it the other way better.
Me, too.
We will disagree on that.
Have a barn with the other, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I think the other was, was more in keeping with, with what you're trying to do.
What's that?
That's, I think.
I think we, we thought that, too.
The next item was the, we had that discussion about the garage, turning radius into the garage ways, we need to switch to the site plan. I gave you my site plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is the issue with the northernmost unit.
And the back out area?
And the backing out area to the property line.
We abandoned putting a garage on that side.
Yeah, I saw you changed it to the front.
So what, what ends up happening is, all the openings are on the front, but there's, there's no opening on the two ends, so that the openings are kind of bookended by solid building, you know, here and there. So it's not sort of garages, you know, it gives the building a sort of a beginning and an end, rather than it just feeling like a slice of something longer.
And then we're also gonna berm up, you know, we're gonna put, there's gonna be landscaping up the side so that the, they appear more cut into the earth as opposed to sitting on top of the earth.
So we're burning the fill back into, so the mill isn't sticking up out of the air then.
Okay.
The intention is to make it look very historically, you know, cut in, you know, as, as old carriage entrances often were on the sides of barns.
The other issue that came up was there were four parking spaces there, four or five? I think four originally.
Four.
And we had eliminated one, we took one out for your suggestions that, you know, we had enough parking, so take one away and make less.
Okay.
And then you had asked for some lighting details, so we have a lighting plan.
Do you have on your list the width of this driveway?
Yes.
Did you talk about that?
Um, did I skip over that? Yeah, that's, it was on here. Yeah, we, we shrunk down, we shrunk that driveway down to twelve feet.
We shrunk, we shrunk it down here. So it maintains the twelve feet here and then widened it up here on the turn for the fire truck access and then shrink back down here. And that's a, a little bit of a change for the fire department, so we're actually meeting with them on site tomorrow to make sure that they're still happy with that.
We're just gonna stay, meet them in a few minutes.
But that's.
Yeah, it's almost today.
We'll have to open the planning board meeting for the twentieth.
So good.
Have to close this.
The lights are.
That's okay.
Lights are limited to shielded wall mounts, some ceiling surface mounts, all, not these colors, but all kind of, you know, fully shielded enamel sort of RLM lights and then shielded floods. So that's what's shown on the lighting plan, but this is the extent of the, of the fixture types.
So where, where are the shielded floods going?
On the buildings or? Shielded floods, I think, the A's.
Really just safety.
Yeah.
Right here, this end.
Just to really light sort of ingress and egress.
And I think here.
So it's not on poles, it's just.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, there's no poles.
No poles.
But they are on swivels, so they could.
Yes, right, so we want, we want them fixed so that they don't get redirected.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're very high up, but for the most part of this.
Can you get ones that are fixed as opposed to ones that are swiveled, so that we don't have to worry about this in the future? So they're actually downlit and always focused down?
Yeah, I mean, the way I've dealt with it, I can look, I haven't seen them, but I'm, I'm sure they're out there, whether I can find some that are consistent.
You know, like goose neck lamps are.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You know, to me are more attractive than wall mounts.
Yeah, I.
And you can get those short goose necks, they come off the wall about that far, and those look historic, you see a lot of them on old barns and that sort of thing.
I think that's fine.
Are we able to do that without the aiming effect of these?
You know, Central Hudson.
You know, we able to light all the.
Floodlights.
Yeah, I, I think the question is more, I think we.
That's what it is.
Yeah, I was gonna say, like, I just, whether they do the job they need to do, is the question, right? Because those shine much more directly straight down and we might need them to shine slightly at an angle, no?
Well, can we make that a condition in the site plan, since this is commercial and there's gonna be an entity who's gonna be in charge, rather than a bunch of individual homeowners who are gonna go and move it all around?
Well, you know, we don't like to get enforcement, we like to actually do things right the first time. You know, I think this works fine. You know, that sort of light, this sort of light, but that one's scary.
No, we prefer that, I'm just worried that in some of these areas, you want it to shoot out so that like maybe it hits somebody's car, you know what I mean?
And I know what you're saying about the bigger goose neck lights.
Yeah.
I think our fear is that they won't do the job that they need to do. It's not that we disagree with you aesthetically, it's that if that's where the light needs to be cast.
Well, then you're, you're putting on angled light and we wanna have downlets. So the, the way you deal with that is extend it out from the building or you put a pole in where you need to.
It's fine.
Perhaps we could say something like, these can't be used on a first story, they have to be used on a second story, where they would be out of reach.
No, I, I think we really wanna have, we specify this with everybody in the village, downlit fixtures, not fixtures that can be cranked up because you want a little more light out there.
It's, it's fine, you know, I, I, shielded was the first step, but if you want that, no, no.
Yeah, we're taking shielded lighting as a, fixed shielded lighting as a condition, sure.
You know, and these numbers look fine, you know, they taper off well before your property line. So I don't have a problem with building-mounted lights, but they have to be ones that are sort of focused downward.
This, this company has exactly what you're talking about.
And if you need a little more throw, put a little more goose neck on it.
Yeah. It's a residential field, though, which is nice.
Yeah. There's this beautiful goose neck lamp on a barn out, probably should get off the Teconic on Bull's Head Road, that just.
Right.
I know, I know the lights.
Yeah, it's huge, yeah.
Yeah, no, and that's exactly the aesthetic we're going for.
Yeah, the enamel finish.
We're, we're saying the same thing.
The white porcelain lining on the inside.
Yeah, rejuvenation or something, yeah.
Yeah, this, this leaves it too open to.
That's fine.
Manipulation later on by somebody. And again, it's not, we're not just dealing with you guys, we're dealing with.
No, we totally understand.
No, I.
Absolutely. So the only other items that you had brought up were to talk to the fire department, we have a meeting with Brian Connolly tomorrow. We don't expect much, because we haven't changed much since our prior meeting with them. We had a good long meeting with a number of members of the fire department a couple of months ago. So this incorporates all of their prior suggestions.
That, those roads were never linked up under the current plan, right?
We showed them a linked-up road and they had actually liked that. Yeah, they wanted the linked-up road.
They must think this is.
They didn't mind backing out, but they did appreciate the fact that it was linked up.
Okay, good.
But we'd gone through a number of issues that you had raised and, you know, that were on the plans and I think we fixed everything that the board wanted.
Where are the project now? We have the lot line issue that has to be.
We have to resolve the boat house. You know, what, what actually.
Should step back.
We never really went over the boat house here in your elevation. Maybe we should.
We have them here only because with, it was my reflection, we looked at it and there weren't any comments, asked if there were changes.
Well, I think we didn't understand.
Right, that wasn't.
We thought, I thought, at least, that it was within the same building footprint, it was rehabbing an existing building. And it sounds like it's being expanded now onto what used to be.
I don't know if we agree with, I mean, again, there was a previously approved building on this footprint by the board that, you know.
Which is expired by now.
Right.
I mean, it sets precedent, but it doesn't, we can still make changes.
It sets precedent and then they question the building structure, carport, not, you know. But anyway, so it, it is within what we deem to be the structure and that's the building and the carport that existed.
Four O and four one have the elevations, they're, they're kind of ganged up with the elevations to the mill building. Sort of thought of as one complex, so this is the, this is from the adjacent, from the north side. Sorry, I gotta, I'm looking at it upside down. That's from the north side, right, this is the side of the mill. From here, it's way in the background.
Yeah.
And from here, and that's a, that's just a study, texture study of it, and then here it is from the south, and that's it from the lake.
The intention is to bring down the scale of that building as you depart from the main building. It's meant to minimize it, to fit in to its setting better.
I mean, the, the idea is, in the way that the mill is, there's three units and one unit that's broken off and then the boat house is sort of a satellite, so it's, it's really the same feel as the mill structure. That's sort of meandered over closer to the lake.
Yeah. But the existing boat house is like from here, here, and then there's this extension of the carport or whatever you call it.
Sitting on the footprint of the carport, yeah.
All right.
Lower pitch gable, again, to not have it reproduce the size and scale.
So, so we're gonna get an interpretation in terms of.
Yeah. Whether you need a variance or not a variance.
Without that interpretation, it's kinda silly to go into a whole lot of.
It does seem to me that now would be the time to take care of the encroachment issue.
Right.
You know, it's always a matter of a couple feet.
He said it a little time.
Notch in the building or whatever it takes to.
John knows that.
Cut the corner.
Right, he knows, yeah, he asked, he asked for us to give him time to be able to review it.
Well, if we administratively solve that issue, are you not happy?
Uh, well, yeah.
The encroachment, you know, with the neighbor, which we sort of solved both encroachments with one stroke of the pen.
Well, let's, you know, I'm all for agreements between neighbors, but it seems to me, if you have the opportunity to fix a problem, you fix it rather than go through a bunch of lawyers to, to.
Ten feet's required.
Careful, there's a lawyer here, you gotta be careful what you say now, John.
He's still, Rich is still with us.
He's still away, too.
It's a pre-existing building.
But you solve it, instead of just.
We don't have that's a progress.
It'd be recorded, it'd be.
Don't look at this.
That's being renovated. Well, I'll take a look at it. Comment down.
All right.
What about the lot line? We have to change it or combination of the lots, or we're gonna call it?
I thought at the beginning we said we would just make that, you know, a condition before you sign the map, that we would, we would consolidate.
All right, so you'll come back there. Can't clear any of these cases.
We could clear it, we could clear.
Trying to clear cases.
Couple of conditions, then we're clear.
And we could clear this next month.
Now, we're getting close.
Getting close.
I guess then the park.
So we're coming back really to talk about.
Yeah, it's not like you're gonna do anything next month anyway.
The lot line in the boat house and try to finish this up. Yeah, I think the lot line.
Not the lot line, the encroachment, yeah. The northern.
Line off or.
Fire department.
Fire, fire department.
Fire department.
So we're, we're very, very close.
And some notes on the elevation of the addition of the farmhouse. On all the elevations, we should have, we should have building materials specified on all the elevations.
Just take sure I have everything, so we, we can clear it next time if I write a good list, so.
Yes.
Yes, make a good list.
Boat house.
Check it twice. Check it twice. My guy's naughty and nice.
Interpretation.
Close the case, we need to close the case.
Encroachment.
Fire department sign off on the driveway.
FD, yeah. Lot line, condition, but we'll try to get that rolling.
Do we have a final landscaping?
Oh, there was landscaping on that plan that I thought was pretty intensive.
Did we?
Well, I, if you want to pull it out again, I'll...
We probably should go over that one more time before we...
Yeah, there are street trees across the front of that property already.
Could we do that tonight, just in case there's some comments? We can, you know, we can try to incorporate them.
Why don't we take it out, look at it just a place?
Yeah, I think if we look at the landscaping plan in there...
Is landscaping part of it?
And I build the materials down for the elevations.
Oh, okay. Give me Rich's plan.
Rich, your plan with the landscaping should be in there.
Here?
Should be in there.
She's confident in trees, existing every tree, Abby. You can see these.
Let's get a little while of these. It's a girl, huh?
They're defined over, on a list over here?
You have, you have defined my species, Rich, or?
Okay, so we would, we would want it defined by species.
Oh, they're on there.
Are they on there?
No, but the new trees aren't.
The new trees aren't, so the new trees should be...
I have this... Ah. So what... That is a colorful plan.
So what this is, is if it's an, it's existing, if it's an, it's new. They're coded by darker, I know it's confusing, but darker greener are the conifers, these are lower scale, all this is existing. Neruda dendrons, existing ornamentals, new ornamentals, maples through here, couple new spruces, tameses, there's an existing, there's an existing apple here, so put a few more down in there. So the idea was to sort of pick up on the theme of what's there, saving as much as possible and just fleshing it out, kind of running it through the site. So we're not introducing new species, we're just reinforcing what's there.
So we could get a copy of this?
You can have it existing right there. There's two there.
So you said there's major problems with maple trees in the village.
And this is your proposal in terms of...
These are existing, and we're not proposing any new ones.
Well, the species are on here, right?
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, so we're, I'm good with that.
That's good, isn't it nice?
None of the new trees are on public property, so we don't have to go through the tree commission.
Right. They're thorough.
So you come, it's a major maple disease that's killing a lot of the village trees, it's a real problem. It's why they, when they do their tree planting of 30 trees twice a year, they plant 30 different trees, so you'll never have a problem of getting a disease that kills, wipes out everything.
Certain maple species that it's going to...
It's a certain maple species, I forget which one it is. Might be the ones that turn red, not the red maples, the ones that turn bright red, the sugar maples, I think, is the enemy, it's killing them.
The sugar maples...
Opposed wall here, fence.
I'm sorry?
There's a fence here in front of the parking lot?
Oh, that's a sort of pergola kind of structure, right?
That's what we had talked about.
Sort of the...
Yeah, we had left that open as to what the board wanted, but it said that was the former wall of the house.
Uh-huh.
We want to create something there.
It goes to the older building, but we're, I mean, we're sort of good with just screening it and not having a structure there, I think, right?
Well, is there foundation, there's foundation there now?
That's the building.
The building, right, but, but if you took the building down, there would be foundation to that.
Our hope is that we will find attractive, our hope is that we will find attractive...
Stone.
Well, it's not stone, we know that, but...
Architectural elements.
Architectural elements that will look slightly like...
Right.
The design is a mill that's supposed to look like it was built a long time ago, so the sort of ruined wall kind of goes with that aesthetic. But again, very...
Not a ruined concrete wall.
Have a lead screened or double screened from the road.
Right, it should be low enough.
I don't think...
We're not talking over four feet, right?
Makes sense to put a ruined concrete wall in front of this aesthetic.
All right, as long as it isn't over four feet in the front yard.
Probably not even three.
Yeah, and 95 feet off of, you know, the road, too, so...
So we're gonna keep this and put it on with the plan?
Yeah, please, that would be...
Okay, good.
So we have our homework.
I'll hand that to our...
I'll hand that to our panel.
Okay.
Did you get the addition of materials on the elevations?
The farmhouse elevations, the floodlight.
All the elevation should have materials.
Material designations in the floodlight.
Yep. And we owe you the DOT's letter, we have a letter from the DOT granting conceptual approval and being fine with the driveways and the locations they are. So we'll share that with you. That was something you asked for last time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next month.
When is it? Is this the 15th?
We have three sets of minutes to the room. My term is up, this chairman.
Yes.
Anybody else want to take a job?
I think you should help through the hospital.
Right.
And the park. Turn us off.
It should be next five years.
Yeah, okay, are we turning?
We have to make a motion for chairman.
You have two minutes.
I don't think so, David.
Okay.
David, our attorney, needs to catch us for two minutes.
Okay.